Board of Supervisors to order invocation by Reverend Jones and then filed by Pledge Allegiance, please stand Reverend Jones.
Let us pray eternal and always God we thank you for who you are you're great and greatly to be praised we pray that you might continue to let your blessings be upon this county we thank you for God the preservation of this courthouse that we're meeting in for the first time all the great memories to through this present time such an important facility to Appomattox County well we pray to my blessed hour leading tonight and be the best.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You be seated. Before we start I'd like to congratulate Supervisor-elect Mr. Simpson on his winning his election and Reverend Jones on his reelection. Next up is Citizen Com is setting the agenda. You've all had a chance to look at the agenda is there any changes to the agenda if not will accept the motion to approve as submitted Reverend Jones has moved to approve this agenda as submitted is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hips has seconded it all in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay the agenda is approved as submitted. First up Citizen Com at period this time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen no individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes and I see that Ms. Kayla Simpson would like to speak to the board at this time so you come up give your name and address and.
My name is Kaylee Simpson I reside at 1508 Church Street and speaking of my residence I love wallpaper and earlier this year I really really wanted to put up some new wallpaper in my home but when my husband and I started noticing leaks in our ceiling I held off on putting up wallpaper knowing it's pointless to decorate a wall under a leaky roof it turned out that we ended up needing to replace our roof entirely and that's what we eventually did and no more budget for wallpaper. Appomattox County noticed some leaks recently too several years ago it was proposed to replace the roof and add some climate control to this building this project was estimated to cost $500,000 and it included one of the original plans for the ARPA funding over the course of several months it turned into a $4 million adaptive reuse complete with an elevator and expanded footprint on the newly published map outside of courthouse square it was just right outside the entire bill state building is listed as H which means boardroom so if this is only a boardroom and nothing else here's how it impacts and benefits the taxpayers of Appomattox a boardroom provides no positive economic impact provides no improved citizen services provides no benefit to our children and provides no help to the elderly but it did do one thing it made me realize that Appomattox County still has a leak despite the new roof on this building and the leak isn't rainwater it's taxpayer money spent on frivolous leadership passion projects putting up wallpaper before fixing my roof wouldn't have made any sense and spending over $100,000 per square foot on a meeting room will never make sense for this county especially when those funds are desperately needed for other areas thank you.
Thank you Ms. Simpson. All right next up is appearances these are scheduled times are provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside county government to discuss matters of importance with the board and first up we have the Honorable Judge Cunningham who's requested to appear before the board to discuss participation in the residential recovery program.
Good afternoon Mr. Chairman and good afternoon or evening now I guess it is to members of the board I thank you all a lot for allowing me to be present with you today I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on this wonderful wonderful work that you've done in this historic courthouse I'm sure it's it's going to serve you well and serve this community well I'm looking at my my phone here because I want to make sure I got my timer on I'm told I had a certain number of minutes and that if I didn't obey that there's a drop floor here and that I would disappear at the end of that so I want to make sure that I stay on on track there I'm here today as a person who was formerly a judge an active judge but now I'm a retired judge and actually I came to Appomattox frequently and I enjoyed my trip here I enjoyed working with the with the court staff it was just a wonderful group of people in Appomattox and I've always enjoyed my trip here but my my reason here today is is motivated by what I discovered prior to the time that I retired I retired in 2016 but several years before that before I hung up my robe I had the displeasure and the heartbreaking experience of seeing these young people appearing before me on days we call advisement days and that's that's days when people who got arrested during the week would appear before the court to be advised of their right to have an attorney and to be advised of the nature of the charges against them and it seemed to me that every court date on advisement the numbers of young people were getting high and higher and there was a common issue a common criminal situation with them and they were all charged with drug use and and violating their probations and and being being sentenced to jail because they violated their probation not to use substances but what was happening was that they would appear in jail for a short period of time or didn't go to jail and we put them on probation but in no time at all they were right back before me again with the same problem of not being able to control their use of drugs and I said it was heartbreaking because I saw these young people as intelligent young people bright many from great families and who had bright futures it seems to me I'm not talking about hardened criminals I'm talking about young young folk who got in the wrong crowd who got a prescription from a doctor and abused it and and got and finally got addicted so they were all in my judgment afflicted by and controlled by the grip of addiction and there came a point when I was really concerned about my role in this process I don't have any problem never had a problem of sentencing somebody who did something very wrong sentencing people who who manufactured drugs who who pushed drugs on other people and there were many people who came before me who never used drugs themselves but they were pushing this poison on the people in our community but the people I'm speaking of tonight are people who who can be saved and I want to do all I can do while I'm able to do it to save these people we looked at for many years we looked at jail as the way to deal with the problem but in my experience I found that sending young people to jail and they're not all young I don't I don't mean fifteen and fourteen I don't I don't deal with those those juvenile court anyway but I'm talking about folk in the age of twenty-one twenty-five thirty thirty-five forty and then from time to time I see them it's it's sixty but they are not the majority of the people the majority of the young people I'm talking about all within that age group of say twenty-one to thirty-five or forty and and so I began to realize that jail was not the solution so what are we doing when we send folk to jail oh Lord let me start I ain't even starting to stopwatch we send people to jail where there is nothing for them to benefit from it is a it is a cold place there's no there's no counseling there for the most part now I realize that some jails across our country are trying to be innovative and trying to do some things different but for the most part jails are a place where we warehouse people and hope that they get better but we don't do anything we most of the time in jail to make them better and and there's a reason for that I understand our jails are not equipped to that to do that to do that but what happens in jail is that they usually meet up with some of the friends there they get better at they at least they think they get better of being folk who can get out and try and do some other things so it is it is a place where there is no hope where there is no ability to to get folk off of drugs and and get them to be decent and good members of our society and as I said before these are not these are not evil people you know and I want to make the distinction now because I know there are some evil but the the people I want to try to help today are people who are sick they suffer from a substance use disorder and they want to change they want to be better but sometimes the grip of addiction I I don't know if you know of anybody who has ever been addicted a friend a relative a neighbor somebody but they really do want to change but they but the grip of 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 drugs is so strong on people that it's hard to do without professional help and that's what we plan to do with our project that I will talk with you about in a second we live in a part of Virginia the South Central Virginia region where there is a significant rate a number of our young people dying from overdosing from drugs the overdose rate in South Central Virginia which includes Appomattox and Halifax and the other counties that I've been working with is twice that of the state average so we have to we have to do something about it and one of the reasons that I am here today is that I want to talk to you talk with you about the creation of our recovery court program which I believe will significantly help the situation that we are facing ourselves in South Central Virginia I started a recovery court back in 2016 just before maybe a year before I retired I retired in 2016 but we started on the recovery court in 2015 and that record has been extremely successful in helping people to get off drugs we have a 60% success rate in getting people off substances you know these are people when you when you first walk through the door you sometimes you scratch your head you say hey no way in the world that person gonna get off drugs but we found that that you really can't judge them on the way they come in we judge them on the way they go out and they are as I say 60% successful in in getting to recovery and the reason is that I I think that's that I attribute to our success and to think it's borne out by the by the evidence and statistics is that when you treat people like they are human beings when you treat people as if they if they are worthy to live a decent life and you and you pat them on the back when they do something decent when you make them accountable when you have a program that is truly that is truly filled with compassion which is our recovery court is people change I can show you they change the the simple things a hand sometimes a little handshake from the judge sometimes I get off the bench and somebody stayed sober for thirty days or forty days or whatever the case may be I'll step off the bench and and shake their hands or give them a hug and those little small things make a tremendous difference in giving them that extra motivation and courage to get away from those things that they know are doing them no good the drugs the things that have destroyed the families and disrupted family unity so I believe that that we can help these people I as I indicated to you when they first come to us they're hopeless they're just broken all up broken down don't believe in themselves have no self-esteem can't look at you in the eye unemployed but we turn them around on the basis of our technique which is an evidence-based effort we use strategies that we don't just come up with put out the sky we use strategies that have been used over the years by people who started recovery courts thirty-five forty years ago we use those best practice standards and we and we we make them believe in themselves that they can be okay we we don't profess that we can cause miracles when people first come but when they do come into our program we require honesty we require them to show up every day we require them to attend all of their sessions community meetings counseling sessions and they have to come to court every Tuesday morning and they are tested for substances several times a week so we know whether they're using or not as I indicated to you 60% of our people are successful but 40% are not successful so we lose 40% of our people who relapse and so the question is what in our experience tells us the reason for that is the reason is not that they don't have the willpower the reason is not that they don't want to change the reason is that they lack a place to stay they lack a decent place to live when we get people in recovery or even the people among the 40% we get them in recovery for a period of time but when they go back to their communities every day and they hang out with the same friends every day the temptations are too great it's hard for them to battle their environments and for that reason we are building a residential recovery center in to serve South Central Virginia we call it the South Central Virginia Residential Recovery Center and we think it's going to be a tremendous asset to the area the Supreme Court of Virginia asked me three years ago if I would chair this effort as a pilot program to see what what we can do with it see if it works I can tell you it does work because I've gone to states where they have residential recovery programs I've been to Tennessee I've been to Michigan I've been to Kentucky and the judges that I speak with there tell me and I realize this is somewhat to some extent anecdotal but they tell me that 95% of their people remain in recovery when you put residential recovery housing with a recovery court program 95% and that that sort of was an and I was incredulous about that at first and then I would ask them you know wait a minute ninety-five they say the reason is that for the first time in the lives of some of these people they have a decent place to stay they have a they they get a job they get a job that pays well their roofs don't leak and they don't want to give it up so I am confident that this program that I will talk with you a second to but I'm getting on I know I'm I'm close to my twenty minutes already I'm confident that it's going to make a tremendous impact in South Central Virginia in helping our families and our children and our communities I believe it's going to it's going to cause generational change it's going to lift self-esteem it's going to it's going to be it's not going to be just a building this this 100 bed center that we have it won't be just a building but it will be in my view a sanctuary it'll be a place where people can be treated holistically there will be staff around the clock there will be a psychiatrist there will be people who are trained in counseling and all of these types of things is going to be a peer-led peer-governed program so in other words people who will run the center will be people who've been in recovery for years fifteen twenty thirty years and they know what the issues are and they know how to motivate and and counsel people who are just starting out and have lives to be free of drugs so I invite you to to help us out in this way I I I'm meeting with every county in South Central Virginia that with Lunenburg y'all night Brunswick I've met with them all all of these counties have significant drug issues to deal with they spend a tremendous sum of money incarcerating people sick people who can be saved outside of the jail saving money and so I encourage you and I invite this counter to to participate and invest with us and invest in in this recovery process and by doing so we are really investing in humanity so now let me I'm I'm close to my time but I'm gonna skip through this real quick and I'm gonna get out of y'all's way talk about that as I indicated we're gonna have a 100 bed residential recovery center we're gonna have a workforce development building on the center so once people get into sustained recovery for a period of time you're comfortable that they're on the right track we will actually train them for jobs and and jobs that are open in the community in South Central Virginia welding jobs rigging carpentry plumbing we will we're gonna work with the higher education center in South Boston who will help us develop a curriculum help determine what the needs are and where the jobs are and we will train people there on the on the campus for jobs the Centerra Corporation is thinking about joining us with having a a wellness center at the program on the campus and as I said before we want to have a dental clinic because most of the people have substance use this problem have real bad teeth and and they're embarrassed about it and it really doesn't help recovery so we want to get them fixed up their mouths fixed up their teeth fixed up and all those type of things so that blue area at the bottom right there are the counties we're talking with those those are the listed counties that I'm meeting with have met with most of them and all are very receptive to this I've gotten commitments from some counties I've gotten commitments from Department of Corrections and so my job is to try to get commitments and the reason I need the commitment is that the funders of our program are not going to give us the thirty million dollars that we need to build the center unless we can show that county A is supporting and county B county C county D and county E my goal however is to is to make this free at some point because there are too many people who need recovery services who don't come through the courthouse but they are there and so you know we've got to figure out a way to help them as well that blue area the bottom of that dark blue area at the bottom that is South Central Virginia that is we have the poorest healthcare outcomes in that area we don't have the medical resources the medical personnel that other folks have in larger urban areas to treat illnesses particularly the substance use disorders opioid addiction the savings if if Centerra participated with us the daily cost of incarceration is eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents for Appomattox County if Appomattox committed to five beds that would cost four hundred and thirty-five dollars okay so if we subtract the daily cost of five beds at fifty-seven dollars that would result in the daily cost for five people of two hundred and eighty-five dollars the sa- the daily savings with five beds would be a hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five the year of savings would be fifty-four thousand dollars for five people now I think it would be wrong to look at this solely as a way to save money I think that's good you want to save money the biggest part of this is we're doing we helping folks doing what we're supposed to be human beings we helping the least among them to get their lives together the savings is great that's one of them but my biggest mission is to save people save children that was generational so but 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 that's what you save so it's 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 the wonderful thing is savings on one hand but you're also helping people on the other so it seems to me this is the right thing to do I'm done y'all I'm gonna get out of your way so for the entire Southern South Central Virginia area this is what we're saving we're gonna avoid jail care costs now this is not just Appomattox this is for the entire South Central Virginia area fifty million dollars in the border criminal justice cost avoid a healthcare cost twelve million dollars reduce morbidity and premature immortality two hundred and seventy-five million dollars all of this is over fifteen year period of time avoid a productivity cost thirty-three million dollars total thirty-three three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars is what we will save and for Appomattox if Appomattox invested in five beds you will get a return on your investment of eight dollars and one cent I will give you the documentation factor but every dollar that we spend supporting people in the residential recovery center you will save eight dollars and one cents if a business is gonna be great and industry wants to come to a community where they are proactive and continue people with substance use disorders I think that we can point to the fact that we participate in the program to to get job-ready people to train people for job readiness industry industry is not stupid they know that drugs are rampant and drugs are ambiguous so it's everywhere and they they have a difficult time finding decent people to work reliable people sober people to work we can say that we are proactive in this and we are doing something to produce good workers for you sober workers we will test them we will make sure that they're sober and as I said before I believe this this effort will result in a generational change we will reduce depression seventy-four percent decrease in illegal drug use forty-five percent reduction in depression and anxiety thirty-nine percent increase in participant employment for at least one month what a six percent decrease in participant arrests sixty-eight percent decrease in incarceration this is what we anticipate will happen because of this program this information is not I did not come up with this this camp was come up was developed by the company out of Kentucky called the Fletcher Group who specialize in helping the rural communities develop residential recovery program this is a photo of our rep excuse me of our residential recovery center the center building is what we call our centerpiece that will be the 100 bed center will have approximately fifty women there fifty men they will be separated men will not be living with women and all that kind of stuff will have all a separation policy so they will not intermix over to the right all the way to the right over there is our workforce development building where we were training people for DC jobs and over to the left is what we call our step-up apartments where people who wish to live on campus they can live on campus people who don't have anywhere else to live will be allowed to live in the red in the step-up apartments all the way to your left but these are people who go in those apartments have demonstrated their ability to stay off drugs for a span of period of time for the first time they will be allowed to bring their families to the apartment husband can bring his wife mom can bring the children whatever the case is whatever the situation is so this is a holistic approach in dealing with substance use disorder we have nothing like this in Virginia there's nothing there aren't many like this There's nothing, there aren't many like this in the nation. So, this is a real transformational approach to successfully treat and holistically treat people with substance use disorders. I thank you all very much and I know it took longer than what I had planned to do and I apologize for that. But I wanted to make sure that you understood where I am today on this. I'd be more than-
I have one question, Judge.
Yes, sir.
It sounds to me like this would require the cooperation with the Appomattox judges where they would sentence, rather sentencing that person, that first-time drug user, whatever, to jail, they would sentence them to go to your facility. Is that-
That is, that's how it would work. And I have spoken with every judge in the 10th Judicial Circuit. Every judge, Mr. Chairman, tells me the same thing. They say they got so many people that need somewhere to go, that they don't have, they don't know what to do. So, this place is gonna fill up. I can assure you that. If it doesn't, the Department of Corrections has already asked for 30 beds. You got people in the community who need somewhere to go. We're not coming to the courts. I predict that there will be, there will be people who are affluent in places around the country, Richmond, other places, who have a son who is addicted. Dad can afford to send him somewhere. This place will be, you can see it, it's gonna be a very serene atmosphere. We're gonna have walking trails. We're gonna have a great big garden. So, the people, while they're waiting for jobs and getting trained for jobs, they will be doing something. We will have a project of some kind for them to do. Garding is one. And they will tend to the gardens. They will give the vegetables away, teach them how to help the community. So, this is all part of our plan to teach them to be useful and not just takers of community services, but to be givers of community service and give back to the community. We will have equestrian-type of services at some point. We will probably work out something with horse, people who have horse farms and do that type of thing. We'll have dance therapy, yoga, all that kind of stuff to make the place interesting and to keep the people's mind away from going back to drugs. This is what all of this is designed to do.
Okay, Judge Cunningham, your financial backers, what type of commitment are they looking for at this time from the county? Just a commitment to support the program or a monetary commitment? What are we talking about?
Okay. Sir, I'm asking for, you may as well just don't say it, Judge. Don't let up. We asking for, we asking for a commitment. We, as I said before, I'm confident that you will need them. Your counsel attorney told me that there's a significant need and there's no question in this matter that they could fill up the gap. But let me tell you this. If for some reason, and I don't think that would be the case, but if for some reason you say, well, Cunningham, we don't need you one day, even though you may have given us a commitment for that, we will, I want everybody here to, we will never sue you, okay? No lawsuit will ever be brought. And so, we will have some conditions in the MOU such that you don't need to worry. And basically, the commitments are necessary for the funders. They're not gonna, they're not gonna fund this anymore. Trying to get our funds from the, from low income tax credits, new market tax credits, the backup commission pretty much insured us funding. Hope you all are based in the parts that are really interested in helping us and pretty much assured us that it will work with us. And today, we hired a campaign organization going to help us raise the necessary money. We expect 78% of our philanthropy organization, corporation. Atachi, one of the main corporations in our community, already committed to help us with naming opportunities. Thinking about agreeing to have our workforce development building, called the Atachi Workforce Development Building. We will market beds. We will market anything. We can market naming rights of almost anything we can name over there. We will give a person right to own a bedroom, have her name put over a bedroom. So, we will come up with all types of creative ways to make this happen because it needs to happen. It must happen.
Sounds like a very worthwhile project and I agree, something is needed. Is there any other questions from board members?
Well, if not, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at any future point in time that y'all have. And please feel free to give me a call if you want to talk more about it. Be more than happy to do it. And again, I thank you all so very much for listening to me tonight, okay?
Thank you, Judge.
And then I apologize for taking more time than I should. So, then you have to judge a form of lawyer's office. Or a pre-.
All right, next up, we have action items. First is the Board of Equalization. At last month's board meeting, the board discussed appointing David Hicks and George Almond, who communicated their willingness to serve on the Board of Equalization. The Board of Equalization can be closed up to five members, which should be confirmed at the November meeting so that the training can be scheduled and completed. Don Jones and Jeff Smith have also volunteered to serve. Jeff Smith, George Almond and David Hicks were trained and have served on the 2019 Board of Equalization. So, it is recommended that we appoint David Hicks, George Almond, Jeff Smith and Don Jones to the Board of Equalization. Is there a motion as such?
Mr. Chairman, would you make a motion? I'd like to add another name-
All right.
-to this person as previously served on this board of equalization. He asked me to put his name, Stephen Connolly.
Mr. Carter's already put forward Steve Conley, who has also served on the Board of Equalization before. Is there any objection to that? All right, is there a motion to appoint these one, two, three, four, five individuals as listed?
So moved.
Reverend Jones has moved that we appoint the five members listed. Is there a second? Mr. Hips has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing David Hicks, George Almond, Jeff Smith, Don Jones and Steve Conley to the Board of Equalization, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried and the five are appointed to the Board of Equalization. Next is Board of Equalization Compensation Rate. The Code of Virginia, 58.1-3375, compensation for members. State that members of every Board of Equalization shall receive compensation for time actually engaged in the duties of the board to be fixed by the government body, the governing body of the county. The government body of every county may limit the compensation to such number of days that his opinion is sufficient for the completion of the work of the board. During the last reassessment, the board members were paid $100 for half a day and $150 per day. Staff recommends that we set the compensation rate for the Board of Equalization members. Is there a motion to set the compensation rate with a dollar amount?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
I made the motion that would keep the day secret.
All right, Mr. Carter's made the motion that we set the compensation rate at $100 for a full day, or excuse me, for a half-day and $150 for a full day. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Willskill has made the second discussion. All righty. Call for a roll call vote on that. Mr. Carter? Mr. Hips? Mr. Willskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Compensation for Board of Equalization is set at $100 for half-day, $150 for a full day. Next up is Committee Appointments. Library trustees. We're considering the appointment of Ms. Susan Williams for Appomattox River District, Ms. Hope Adams for Rec Island District. Is there any others? Mr. Barney has sent me an email this morning saying he is not, doesn't want to, so that leaves an opening in the following river district. So, is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Williams and Ms. Adams to the library board? Mr. Hips has moved to point. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Ms. Williams and Ms. Adams have been appointed to the library board for a term, four-year term ending June 30th, 2029. Economic Development Authority. Please consider the reappointment of Mr. Gary Tanner to the Economics Development Authority. Mr. Tanner is willing to serve another four-year term if reappointed by the board. Staff recommends we reappoint Mr. Tanner. Is there a motion as such?
So moved.
Reverend Jones has moved?
Sir.
Mr. Hips has seconded. Discussion? All right. Motion to approve Mr. Gary Tanner to serve another four years ending December 31st, 2029. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Mr. Tanner is reappointed. Planning Commission. Please consider the appointment, reappointment for the following. George Almond, Appomattox River District, turn in the planning commission expires December 31st, 2025. Mr. Almond's willing to serve another four-year. John Mills from Rec Island District has communicated that he is unable to complete his term, so we have an on-expire term for Mr. Mills, which would end in December 31st, 2026. Steve Connor's term ends December 31st, 2025 and represents the courthouse district. He has moved out of the courthouse district. Although this isn't a requirement for the planning commission appointed district specific, it has been the practice. So, staff recommends reappointment of Mr. George Almond and appoint a representative to fill that vacated by Mr. Josh Mills ending in 2026.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
Oh, Mr. Connolly, Representative for that district. I think we need to wait until supervisor comes on board to then make his appointment.
All righty. Any other comments from the board or Mr. Hips?
I'd make a motion to reappoint Mr. Almond and then for the one-year remaining term in my district that Josh Mills is vacating, Tom Adams has said that he would do that. So, my motion would be those two.
Okay, Mr. Hips has made the motion to reappoint George Almond for the Appomattox River District and to appoint Tom Adams to fill the remaining term of Mr. Mills, which will expire December 31st, 2026. Is there a second?
A second.
Reverend Jones has seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Carter?
Just one question. Tom Adams, is he dead? Something to you know? He's already dead. There was something- He's already on the register thing. bullish? Is he still part of this? I have no idea. I just wanted to, that's why I don't know.
All right. All those in favor of the motion appointing, reappointing George Almond to fill the Appomattox River District and for appointing Tom Adams to fill the remaining term of Josh Mills in Rec Island, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the appointments have been approved. Next, Board of Building Code of Appeals. Please consider reappointment of Mr. Blair Smith, Mr. Joseph Sayers and Mr. Samuel Weber and Mr. Michael Barney and Mr. Robert Stevens to the Board of Building Code Appeals. All members are willing to serve another three-year, three-term, another, excuse me, another three-year term if reappointed. Is there a motion to reappoint these gentlemen? Mr. Carter's made the motion to reappoint these gentlemen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Willskill has seconded. Harry Nun will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those four gentlemen have been appointed for a three-year term ending December 31st of 2028. All right, next up's the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriation, light item transfers, fund transfers, and any item on the Consent Agenda has been removed from the Consent Agenda through question of board member prior to the vote of Consent Agenda. Items removed from the Consent Agenda should be considered by the board individually in order from which they were removed from the Consent Agenda immediately following consideration of the Consent Agenda. Is there any changes to the Consent Agenda? Any questions on the Consent Agenda? All right. Can we have a motion then to approve the Consent Agenda? Mr. Carter moved to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second? Mr. Hips has seconded. All those in favor of approving this Consent Agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Consent Agenda has been approved. All right. I guess we don't have an attorney's report. Nope. All right, Ms. Adams' administration's report.
Okay, you have my report before you as well as I emailed a report this afternoon, so you should have a digital copy also. There were a couple of things that I wanted to point out. As you very well know, we were awarded ARPA funds four years ago. And December of this year is the final date to have all funds expended. So, I wanted to just give you an overview of how those funds were used. First of all, we provided over a million dollars to support the Firefly Broadband Project that would enable all households in Appomattox County to have high-speed internet if they chose to do so. And that promotes small home businesses, remote work and online education, home shopping, telemedicine and continuity of operations during a pandemic or any kind of catastrophic event. Also, we installed new HVAC systems with those funds in the animal shelter as well as the community center, health department, and actually use those funds for HVAC replacement and upgraded water pipes and things that were eligible during this renovation of the old courthouse. Camera system software, and that's through the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and it will help assist with the appraisal software to provide increased accessibility for anyone seeking appraisal assistance. It reduces the in-person inquiries that those offices receive and allows for online, remote work as well. We light it, provided lighting to ball field number four in the sports complex, which of course, you know, that promotes youth activities and we do have an increase in number of teams. Also, we put directional signage around the grounds of all the county buildings so that people, that will help guide not only tourists because we're always getting stopped in the parking lot, but also people trying to visit these offices. That project hasn't been completed, but it will be completed by December. We put commercial dehumidifier systems in the health department and the Department of Social Services. We had received some complaints that there were mold and mildew issues. And so, anyway, that took care, we did remediation to take care of those problems. We also did a county website upgrade to provide accessibility for the citizens and also post public safety notifications. We added a bathroom and a parking lot space at the sports complex. And if you visited that, you know how many additional spaces that that's provided. We also added a play area in the sports complex for small children. And it's a secure area where families that have older children playing can have this area for family activity time as well as for those children. And we provided funds for the High Bridge Trail Expansion. As you very well know, we put the trailhead accessible to the trail in Pamplin. We donated those funds. And we also created clean drinking- those funds. And we also created clean drink and water by replacing the old pipes in the this boardroom. We use those funds for that, as well as the C-Vac Votech Center and Commissioner Revenue and Treasurers Offices. So all of those eligible projects, and that's how those funds were utilized, and I think it provided not only security, but public safety, as well as clean air and drink and water. Also, currently, our budget, we're at 21.79% in spending, so we're right on target for where we are in the fiscal year. And our FY25 annual audit, the pre-audit should be completed near the first of December or end of November, and that will be performed by the pre-auditors, Brown Edwards, and then Robinson Farman Cox will be coming in to do the final audit by the end of December. We issued a cleaning contract for the buildings, you can read that. We're also issuing an employee survey. So staff has prepared a survey that was sent out to the employees to participate. The primary questions are relative to employee insurance plans to determine how we should structure the request for proposal that staff will be issuing from the first quarter of '26, and that will be effective July the 1st. Data center update, the EDA is in the process of scheduling an informal meeting for anyone, informational meeting for anyone who has questions concerning the proposed data center development and operations. The company of IO Capital plans to provide an opportunity to receive questions prior to the informational meeting that is anticipated to be held during the latter part of January, and the EDA will be presenting additional information when details are confirmed. Animal Control, they're working on some presentations to start providing additional welfare, animal welfare education, as well as they will be talking about animal safety care and also the laws. Central Virginia Community College, we received notification that they're exercising their second lease option to renew the lease for another five-year term, which is great news. And the reassessment notices were sent out. I'm not sure if you received yours or not, but they were mailed on Thursday, according to the company, and they were allowed time for recipients of those notices, if they have questions, to appeal to them first, and that appeal process will take place until December the 10th. And then, of course, as you very well know, the appointment of the Board of Equalization will enable constituents to come in, and if they have additional appeals, they can come, appear before the Board of Equalization. But they'll have to be trained the first part of January, and then they'll set up their calendar, and we'll be sending those notices out as a second opportunity for the taxpayers to appeal or have questions. This newly renovated boardroom, been a couple of years coming. So tonight is our first meeting in the boardroom, and I would like to propose holding an open house at the December meeting, which is December the 19th. This space was funded from the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund and American Recovery Plan Act grant. No debt was imposed to the taxpayers, and additionally, the county encourages use of the space and are already beginning to receive reservation requests. We anticipate all county school and Department of Social Services boards and committees using the room, so if anyone needs to request the space, please call the county administration office, and we have set up a calendar that we can provide that reservation.
Yes, sir. You sure can. On the courthouse here.
Yes.
I started here in 1998. First meeting was right here. Looks like my last meeting's going to be right here.
Yeah.
There's history.
That history.
There's history. So while I'm on that, I will provide a message. As you noticed, the beautiful flowers that ordain the diocese here, they have been provided by Judge Puckett. He's excited about this renovation, and he also sent a note that he wanted me to share with you this evening. He says, "Thanks to the Board's foresight, a piece of Appomattox history has been preserved and will be available to all of the sedentary for conducting county business for many years to come." He planned, he had planned to attend along with the Commonwealth Attorney, but they are teaching a class at Liberty tonight, so they hope they can be here in December.
We got the best next one. Here.
That's right.
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
About the courthouse space. It was very meaningful to me. I was, I went to see Ms. Jamerson this week. Bill Jamerson and myself, three weeks ago, we were, he came in to look at the building and give his comments, and I was telling Ms. Jamerson, it meant so much to me, out of all the thousands of buildings that he has built, that I was here with him in his last inspection, if you will. So that was meaningful to me.
In fact, he was in his wheelchair, and we pushed him through the, throughout the building, and he was the first to use the elevator, so.
Thank you.
We are issuing a residential trash pickup RFP, okay, and that is, Mr. Spencer is issuing that because we are looking at many options for trash disposal. And so I know the Board wanted to have some numbers for consideration, so basically, that's an exploration, just to see what's available and what the costs are out there. And we also have other alternatives as well. So if you see that RFP, don't think that that's what we've decided to do. It's just giving us some options to work with. And I have to give a big shout out, yesterday, if you noticed, Cortland Park, there were some activities going on in the park. And we are so blessed to have a community-oriented Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department. Yesterday, amidst the windy weather, the fire department company came out with their equipment and put up all the lights in Cortland. So all the trees are ready for the tree lighting in a couple of weeks. There are a few of us, we cleaned out the pavilions, so we didn't get into the decoration portion of it, but it was a community effort, and kudos to the fire department, because they were all here. And then to our maintenance team, to Jeff and the maintenance, they have been diligently working for the past few weeks and throughout the weekend, so that we could hold the meeting here tonight. I'm sure they're ready to get some rest, and I have to say thank you to Ace Altso. He worked with Jeff on the IT side of the project. So everybody was very nervous coming into this evening. We didn't know what kind of kinks that we would encounter, but those guys, they helped make it happen, so thank you to them. And also, Jeff and I met with Ms. Phelps and Ms. Henderson about the potential renovation of their office space, so they have provided some information to Jeff on some things they're looking for, as we consider and go through the development and planning stages of their renovation. Also, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Simpson as being the newly elected Board Supervisor, and to Mr. Jones for being reelected to the Board. I'd also like to say happy birthday to Janet on our team. Today's her birthday. And any questions?
No questions. I'd also like, you know, to highlight, you know, Jeff, these four main chandeliers are from the original courthouse, and Jeff worked diligently to bristle them, clean all the brass and the globes. That's another historic fixture that's here along with this historic courthouse. Appreciate Jeff and his team in doing all that they've done. Any other comments from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
They've done a good job, definitely. And, oh. Can you hear me now? Right. Oh, they've done a great job, I think. But I'm gonna put the conjunction in there. As I entered the courthouse tonight, I parked over front, where I thought would be the appropriate place to park. I came up the stairs, at the front of the courthouse. The courthouse door, there was no, couldn't get in. Went to the left-hand side of the courthouse, where Dorothy Hamlet was, couldn't get in. Then, lo and behold, I went to the right, where the Commonwealth Attorney Office used to be, ain't get in. I beat, and I knocked. Finally, finally, Jeff and Ms. Adams came to the door, and Ms. Adams makes a comment, "Should've known."
She did?
Yeah, that's right, you was there. But it's a great job.
All right, next up is Supervisor Concerns. This time, it's for individual board members to share information with other members of the Board and the public. Items presented under this heading requiring action will be a future meeting agenda or request additional information with staff members. No item presented under this heading shall be acted upon at this meeting without unanimous consensus of the Board. Mr. Wolfkill.
I just want to congratulate all the effort that went into restoring this piece of history. Applaud to, I wasn't on the Board when the vote was taken to restore this beautiful piece of property, a significant piece of this county's history, but I am happy to see that we did. It was done frugally. People don't know that the estimates were over $2 million to tear it down. So if we look at the $2 million to tear it down, and the over $1 million that we got from federal money, it wasn't that big of a deal. Reserving history is important. We don't need to let our historic buildings crumble and fall away into nothing. And this is, this is really a great thing, and I'm honored to be able to be in here and sit at this podium. That's all I wanted to say.
Reverend Jones?
Yes, I'd like to thank the constituents of Piney Mountain for giving me the opportunity to be able to serve this last term, doing public service. And it was a great campaign. I'd like to thank Ms. Taylor. She was a very wonderful opponent, and we had a great time working at the polls for 13 hours together. I would say, I'm Al Jones running for reelection, please vote for me, and Valerie would say, and I'm running against him, please vote for me. And then I would chime in, and we're all getting along. So the people seemed to really enjoy the fact that we were cordial, and we were getting along. But I wanted to thank her for just the wonderful campaign that she ran as well. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, not at this time.
Mr. Hips?
No, but we actually have an action item that we need to address that wasn't on the agenda, we just realized, which is the Thanksgiving holiday half-day. And so we would need to have a vote of the Board, I think, to add that, add that into this.
You're making that a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion, that we discuss this half, half-day on, what's the date of it?
26th, November 19.
Okay, November 26th.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Reverend Jones has already seconded.
All right, so that's, that's to bring it onto the agenda, right? Okay. So if you don't mind, I can segue. So the issue was that there was some confusion about whether the Board granted that half-day prior to Thanksgiving. When we went back in the recordings from the meeting, when we set the county calendar last year, it was not able to be determined from that recording whether we granted that or not, but it was discussed. So just to make it official, I would make a motion to say that we give, that we close the county on November 26th, the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. Typically, that's a half-day.
I'm a second motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Hips has made the motion, and Reverend Jones has seconded. Any further discussion? All righty, Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also, and thanks for bringing that up. I don't know how we saw, read the emails today, and.
That's right.
Well, and a special thank you from all staff members as well, I'm sure.
Don't think you're getting a half-day off. I got your phone number.
I guess my only, only concern is, and I mentioned once before, is I remember that when I first moved here, VDOT went down the roads and cleaned the brush back. Well, there's some roads in Mr. Wolfkill's territory and my territory where the brush is beginning to overtake, overtake the roads again. And appreciate if VDOT would take care of that. So other than that? Mr. Carter? Oh, and I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to your speech next month at the open, open house for this, talking about, you know, how you started here and now you're finishing here.
I'm sure it won't take a whole lot. Yes, sir.
So you have a motion, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request all rise.
All right.